The City Council of the City of Gunbarrel City, Texas will meet in a regular meeting in City Hall Council Chambers located at seventeen sixteen West Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four at six thirty P. M. Everyone would please rise for the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this night, these citizens, these board members, and all of our city employees and first responders. Give us wisdom, patience, and clarity as we go about our city's business. In Jesus' name we all pray. Amen. The pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. We will now establish a quorum. Roll call from my left, please.
Burns here.
Evans here.
Jacobs here.
Burson here.
Foster here.
We have a quorum. We'd like to welcome Mr. Foster, all the way from across the world, and wish him safe travels when he returns. I would like to read now a mayoral proclamation for the Texas Teachers' Day, whereas Gunbarrel City's future or strength depends on providing a high-quality education to all students, and whereas teacher quality matters more to student achievement than any other school-related factor, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lesson plans and supporting students, and whereas our teachers deserve our continued support, respect, and admiration, and whereas hashtag Teachers Can is a statewide movement supported by more than one hundred and fifty partnering businesses and organizations committed to elevating the teaching profession and honoring the critical role teachers play in the success of Texas. And now, therefore, the City of Gunbarrel City Council joins hashtag Teachers Can and its partnering entities across Texas in celebrating the inaugural Texas Teachers' Day and proclaims October the fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, to be Gunbarrel City Teachers' Day. And it be it further resolved that the City of Gunbarrel City Council encourages members of our community to personally express appreciation to our teachers and display a light blue ribbon outside your homes or businesses the week of October the fifth as a symbol of our support for our educators. I will speak briefly that I was greatly impacted by all of my elementary school and remember them more than anybody. Lakeview Elementary is one that we do a lot of work with and enter into as much help with them as we can with their students and different activities they have. But make sure, if all of y'all do have grandchildren or children, make sure you tell a teacher and those educators how much you appreciate them. Thank you for that. Moving on. Citizens Communications. These are limited to three minutes pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five-five-point oh-oh-seven. Members of the public may speak on any topic. Comments are limited to three minutes, and no action may be taken by the council. Any response from a member of the City Council to non-agenda comments is limited to a statement of specific factual information, a recitation of existing policy, or direction to staff for follow-up. Our first speaker this evening will be Ms. Amherst Faith. Amherst, are you here? Thank you. Please come to the podium.
Got to turn my flashlight on. Amherst Faith, one-five-five Pine Bloom. September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the petitioners committee to repeal ordinance number oh-dash-two thousand and twenty-four dash zero-two-two was granted the right to circulate a petition under the city charter section six. We have thirty days to gather at least two hundred signatures, and the committee expects to fulfill the requirements listed in the charter. Let the people vote. The reasons people sign the petition vary. A hunter is angry he can't dress his birds at his home anymore. A couple are angry they adopted from a shelter, gave dogs a great life, and now the city's saying they haven't done enough. Some just want the government out of their backyards. Others don't see this as a solution, but rather a money grab. Yet another is upset that every time she moves, she has to pay a twenty-five-dollar re-registration fee. The fees will cost a cat or dog owner between ten dollars to fifty dollars per animal. Got three dogs and a cat, you'll pay between thirty dollars and a hundred and fifty dollars per cycle. And if you move, you'll pay an extra seventy-five dollars or twenty-five. It's not really clear in the ordinance. I would pay twenty dollars because my dog isn't microchipped. It's legally and morally acceptable not to microchip, but because I won't follow the party line, I'm charged twenty dollars. Well, guess what? The person who lets his dog run at large is fined twenty dollars. I, who obey the law, pay twenty dollars. The lawbreaker also pays twenty dollars. Where is the justice in that system? So now, I've gotten some questions on social media, so I'd like to address those. One, if this ordinance is repealed, what happens to animal control in the city? Well, the answer is, the county ordinances and state laws will still be ineffective, be in effect and enforceable. Two, why haven't you tried to negotiate with the council to remove the fees? Answer, the council has shown no indication it wanted any negotiation. One councilperson said, "We have to do this." Another said, "It's a small price to pay for the care of our animals." The charter is very clear about the people's right to petition, and we are following that process. Three, why do you call it a tax? Answer, a fee is really a backdoor tax. Tax money goes into a general fund and can be used as the city sees fit. A fee is a limited tax in that it can only be used for certain items. And in this case, it looks like it's a runaround to the ad valorem tax that people resoundingly voted down in two thousand and twenty. Four, how is it a double tax? Because every time I buy a washer at Lowe's, fries at Whataburger, or school supplies at Walmart, I already pay taxes that fund animal control. And I'll close with this. I'll tax your dogs and tax your cats, and then I'll start to tax your hats, balls and bats and all your tools, and yes, I'll tax your family jewels. Sally, silly Grinch, step up in your tracks. I'll tell you what you will not tax. You will not tax my dog and cat, my family jewels, my ranger's hat. I will not bow or bend the knees. Tax yourself if you so please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Faith. Our next speaker will be Paul McCullough.
My name is Paul McCullough. I'm with the EDC, a member there on the board. I'm part of the Subcommittee on Grants and Loans, and we did several workshops on things that the city needs for the grants and the loans. The amount that we will charge for a loan was in that as a recommendation. Also, any penalties on the borrowers was in there. There was also, also a, went crazy. There was also a bond, protection bond, for the city in case the people did not comply with the agreements that they made. Those are not in the information y'all will see today, and I don't know when it will be, but the council needs to know some of those items, okay?
Thank you, Mr. McCullough, and I appreciate your service. Moving on. Consent Agenda. Seven A, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Consider approving the following reports, August fifth, fourteenth, and twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes, code enforcement, court, fire, EDC, July financials, permits and inspections, planning report, police, dispatch, animal control, streets and park maintenance, and August of two thousand and twenty-four financials. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as is.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evans, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes. Moving on. New Business, eight A. We will open a public hearing concerning the Texas Community Development Block Grant Contract Number C D V twenty-one dash zero-zero-eight-six. I believe we have Ms. Wanda Vance with Trailer and Associates who helps us with this. Wanda, would you like to speak?
Wanda, you have to go to the mic.
That's okay. That way we can hear you better.
This is a public hearing for an amendment to the CDBG contract where we are going to remove the small street portion that was in the contract due to the city's emergency need to do that portion. Those funds are being moved over to the drainage portion to do a little further down the ditch than was originally planned, and that is what the amendment is for.
Thank you, Ms. Vance. Does anybody have discussion? Questions? Good. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you. Eight B. Yes. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I needed to close that, and I apologize. Close the public hearing at this time. Moving on to eight B. Consider and take action to approve an agreement with the Cedar Creek Lake Cats, CCLC, to hold adoption events in Gunbarrel City. I will turn this agenda item over to our city manager, Dr. Smith.
Good evening, council. Chapter one-twelve of the Peddlers, Vendors, and Solicitor Ordinance has one-twelve dot oh-three-B. The sale and/or giving of live animals other than adoption events held by a humane society must be contracted with the city for said service. Cedar Creek Lake Cats has a contract with the city, and they have had one for, I think, a couple of years, and they are asking to renew said contract. CCLC, since Cedar Creek Lake Cats is a mouthful, operates out of Pet Sense, which is a pair located at eleven-twelve West Main Street. We invited CCLC here tonight, and they are happy to tell you a little bit about what they do and what they do under this contract. If y'all would like to come up, someone would like to come up. If you'll just go to the mic for me, please. They'll kind of give you a synopsis of the last year or so. Sure. If you'll give them to me, I'll make sure everybody gets them.
I think I was before you guys last March when we first got this done. We had committed to only adopting out spayed and neutered cats at Pet Sense, and that's all we have done since we've started there. Does anybody have any questions for us?
I would love to know if you have numbers, how many cats you've homed since you started this contract with Gunbarrel.
We do it by the year. So last year it was four hundred and sixty, but some of that included some other from, like, PetSmart. And then here, we're at, like, two hundred and thirty so far this year. I will say I get calls ten times a day for people that need help with cats around here. It's a really, really bad problem that we have, and I don't really know how we're going to fix it. I can't take, you know, every cat, obviously, as much as I would like to help. But, and I don't know if animal control in the future is going to work towards, you know, dealing with cats, like a large T N R project or something. Just a thought.
I think the, residents of the animals will, they, a couple places they'll do, like, if someone brought in a feral cat, you tell them it's a feral cat, they give you a discount on spading, they clip its ear, and then you can release it, I believe.
It's just they're only once a week, so, and then they have, obviously, monthly events, so the amount of surgeries they can do will never catch up to the population we have here.
T N R, for those that don't know, is trap-neuter-release, and some cities have a trap-neuter-release program where the city partners with a local vet. I don't believe we currently have a program. We partner with partners, right? But where a resident could trap a feral cat, that's a cat that's not a trained house cat, right? Get them fixed at a local vet for a small cost, and then release them back out into the wild. So it's a, it's a very popular program, and something maybe we should consider down the road somewhere.
Absolutely. I want to thank you, just as a pet owner myself, and someone who didn't know anything about cats, and now I'm a, my wife refers me as the Cat Man, that you guys do great work. I would also love to have you guys speak sometime at our Mayor's Coalition. I have a contact information. I would love for you to speak to all the mayors around the lake. I think it would be great for them, if they don't already know about your program. I think it's a, it's a great program, and I think everyone needs to be aware of it. So thank you for your service.
Okay. And we do offer ten-dollar microchips to anybody who wants their animal chips.
I appreciate that.
Just give us a call, and we can meet you up at Pet Sense or wherever to make sure everyone gets chipped.
Thank you for your devotion.
To all.
That's, that's great.
Thank you so much.
I love all the photos.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we, are we making a motion yet? I move that we approve the agreement with Cedar Creek Lake Cats.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. May I have a vote from my left, please?
Burns, yes.
Evans, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes. Thank you again. Eight C. Consider and take action to adopt ordinance number zero-dash-two-zero-two-four dash zero-two-four, fixing the rate and tax levy for the two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five fiscal year. I will read the ordinance in, it's ordinance number zero-dash-two-zero-two-four dash zero-two-four, an ordinance fixing the rate and tax levy for the City of Gunbarrel City, Texas, for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand and twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, of the City of Gunbarrel City, Texas, in conformity with the laws of the state of Texas and the ordinance of said city repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith. Our sponsor on this item will be none other than our great city treasurer, Mickey Rainey.
Gunbarrel City's tax rate is currently set at zero. It will remain at zero. This is state law. It's part of our budget process. This is a budget cover, just stating that the tax rate is staying the same and at zero, and we still have to vote on it.
Questions? Discussion? None?
Yay.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we adopt ordinance number oh-dash-two-zero-two-four dash zero-two-four, fixing the rate and tax levy for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five fiscal year.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. I'll take a vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evans, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Now, eight D. Consider and take action to award the bank depository contract to Prosperity Bank for the period of October the first, two thousand and twenty-four, through September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-nine. Again, our sponsor of this item will be our city treasurer, Mickey Rainey.
I'm just going to read it because I'm really nervous about this one. We received three bids from local banks for our depository contract for day-to-day banking for the period of October two thousand and twenty-four through September two thousand and twenty-nine. The contract cannot exceed more than five years per state law. Currently, Prosperity is our current depository contract, and it expires this month. We receive them from Prosperity Bank, First State Bank, and Southside Bank. It's important to know that we currently do business with all three banks. Prosperity is our current depository. First State is our city hall loan payment, and we also have our sinking fund there, which is our, for the city hall loan payment, and a few CDs. And Southside Bank financed our E1 pumper. Our last payment for that is two thousand and twenty-five. After careful consideration, staff is recommending Prosperity Bank for our depository contract for the period of October two thousand and twenty-four through September two thousand and twenty-nine. And Jennifer Adams is here with Prosperity Bank if you have any questions.
Questions for Jennifer or staff? Then I will move for a motion.
I move that we take action to award the bank depository contract to Prosperity Bank for the period of October first, two thousand and twenty-four, through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-nine.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. I'll take a vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evans, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes. Eight E. Consider and take action to name an official newspaper for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five fiscal year. Our sponsor on this item will be none other than our city secretary, Janet Dillard.
Thank you, mayor. Section thirty of the code states, "The city council shall annually name an official newspaper." Staff utilizes the paper for a variety of reasons, including public notices, advertisements, promotions, ordinances, and much more. For the past six years, the Monitor's been named the city's official newspaper. However, each year I do reach out to both the Monitor and the Athens Daily Review for consideration, as both are circulated here in the city, and both papers did respond that they'd be happy to service the city's publication needs, and both have a, have proven a great working relationship with the city.
Thank you, Janet. Questions or discussion?
Just, just to clarify, our current agreement, Janet, is with the Monitor, correct? And the city secretary's recommendation to council is the Monitor again going forward, Thank you.
Okay. I will ask for a motion.
I move that we name the Monitor as our official newspaper for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five fiscal year.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Burns, second.
I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. I'll ask for a vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evans, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes. Moving on. In the agenda, eight F. Consider and take action to adopt ordinance number zero-dash-two-zero-two-four dash zero-two-five, amending sections thirty-four point oh-two and one-fifty-six point one-two-one A of the Gunbarrel City Code of Ordinances. I will read the ordinance into the record. Ordinance number zero-dash-two-zero-two-four dash zero-two-five, an ordinance of the city, council for the city of Gunbarrel City, Texas, amending sections thirty-four dash oh-two and one-fifty-six point one-two-one A of the Gunbarrel City Code of Ordinances, providing a severability clause, providing a repealer clause, and providing an effective date. Our sponsor on this item will be our city manager, Dr. Smith.
I'm going to do my best, council. On your screen, you have a little bit of a timeline. If you can go to the next slide, please, Janet. On January the twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-four, council approved ordinance oh-two-zero-two-four zero-zero-six, amending sections thirty-four oh-two, thirty-four oh-three, one-fifty-six one-two-one, and one-fifty-six one-thirty-five of the Code of Ordinances, realigning board members' terms so that all boards took effect on October first start date. All, all board appointments started on October first, and added alternates to both Parks Board and Planning and Zoning. At the August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, council discussed this item and agreed to repeal that ordinance. And since then, I have had some one-on-one conversations with council, and there was a desire to repeal the alternate portion of that ordinance, but to allow the start dates to stay as October first. So this particular ordinance, oh-two-zero-two-four oh-two-five, will repeal the alternates from the ordinance, but allow the start date to stay the same. At the last meeting, there was not an ordinance to repeal the ordinance, and that is required. And so this is the ordinance that will repeal the alternates, but leave the start date as October first. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Dr. Smith?
I realized that was confusing.
I think, just for clarity, all we're doing is we're keeping the ordinance. We're just removing the alternates.
We're removing the alternates one hundred percent.
They're keeping their stuff intact.
So we're not repealing the entire ordinance, just withdrawing, repealing the part that calls out alternates for the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Parks Board.
Everyone good? No further discussion. I'll ask for a motion.
I move, I move that we adopt ordinance number oh-dash-two thousand and twenty-four dash zero-two-five, amending sections three-four point zero-two and one-five-six point one-two-one A of the Gunbarrel City Code of Ordinances.
I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. We will have, vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evans, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes. Also under New Business, eight G. Consider and take action to adopt Resolution Number R-dash-two-zero-two-four dash zero-one-one, establishing an ordinance review committee. I'll read the resolution into the record. Resolution Number R-dash-two-zero-two-four dash zero-one-one, a resolution of the city council for the city of Gunbarrel City, Texas, establishing an ordinance review committee, providing regulations and procedures for said committee, providing severability and providing for an effective date. Our sponsor on this item will be, again, our city manager, Dr. Smith.
So on June the twenty-seventh, discussion of forming an ordinance review committee consisting of two council members, a planning and zoning chair, and appointee, and two citizens, two citizens was not approved by council. This item was asked to be added to that agenda by two council members. After discussing it, that ordinance review committee, commission, or committee, or task force was not approved by council. On September fourth, during the work session, we had a discussion regarding this ordinance review committee, and there was a general consensus from council to go ahead and move forward with forming the committee with a total of twelve members, which is two nominations from each elected official. At that point, we reached out to the city attorney. The city attorney has drafted the resolution that's in your packet to form this special committee, with each elected official appointing two appointees to serve on the committee. As mentioned, the committee will start, as mentioned to council and many of the public, the committee will start with the ordinance that we have on our list that have issues. So those hot topic buttons that either we have a hard time enforcing because they are written vaguely, or times have changed. There are a few of those, game room ordinances, food truck ordinances. Most recently, it was fence ordinances. Our fences say that they can be six foot tall, but really, on streets, they can only be three and a half foot tall. So there are some, some, I guess, conflicting language in our ordinance. And so we'll start. There's, there's a half a dozen or a dozen that we need to start with. Staff has also, both our police chief, our code enforcement officer, and our building official have kind of been building lists of things that we need to look at. We will start with those. My recommendation to city council would be to save the land uses ordinances until the very end of the review period, because we have applied for a grant or in the process of applying for a grant with GrantWorks that would update our comprehensive plan and would provide updates to all of our zoning, and also drainage review as well. Drainage maps and drainage review, because that, that tends to be an issue here in Gunbarrel with the way the land is sculpted. So there are two items on the agenda tonight. The first would approve the resolution, setting the committee, and the second would allow each elected official to name their two appointees and for those nominations to be approved. So the first one is the resolution, and the second one is for each elected official to name their two appointees as called out in the resolution.
Questions for staff?
Yeah, I have something about it. I just want to kind of, it's kind of, some of this is going to be kind of repetitive of what she said, but I want to kind of give a rundown. Said, we had a, council had a workshop going over the establishment of the ordinance review committee. I brought up that we pos, that it would, I possibly would suggest each councilman pointing one member to this ordinance review committee. It was, somebody thought it would be better if we had two per councilman, which would be ten. Uh... be 10. And to look over our 2,000-plus ordinance with five members, 10 members, and then we went to elected officials, which went to 12 members, and getting a consensus on 12 members over a six-month, a six-month to up to a possible year, to me, sounds very unrealistic in my humble opinion. A person came forward and gave a suggestion to look at a law firm that deals with municipal law on a daily basis. Section 155040 that she's talking about deals with drainage, which seems to be a major hang-up on most of the major projects presented here in Gun Barrel right now. This ordinance needs to be addressed first over any other ordinance. I feel to get this project on the books and move forward, I feel the ordinance, the ordinance-appointed review board are not qualified or knowledgeable enough to get this ordinance in a workable order, to get this project moving forward, or to get the projects moving forward. I'm just saying, with this said, I think we should at least look at this option before moving forward, and I would suggest tabling this for further discussion.
I have a motion to table. Do I have a second on that?
Second, Evan, second.
I have a second. Vote from my left, please.
Burns, no.
Jacobs, no.
Burson, yes.
Boss, yes.
Motion passes.
I just like this. Can I, we didn't have any further discussion. Can I just at least say something?
Yes.
And there's not 2,000 ordinance. There's about 766 ordinance total that was emailed out to us, not 2,000. And again, we're saving the land usage for later use for when we do have someone who's educated to make those decisions. The rest of them are not necessarily, I don't need an engineer to tell me how tall a fence needs to be, or how to correct it if it's on the roadside versus the front of the house. I don't need to spend tens to 30 to hundreds of thousands of dollars for those types of things. Those are things that I think other cities have done with using inside people to go over those, just like you do your charter review or anything else. We're not going to make decisions on drainage. I don't know nothing about drainage, so we're not asking them to do that. But I do think that there are quite a few ordinances that we do have some educated people in the city of Gun Barrel that can actually make those decisions.
I don't disagree with you. But the point is, is this one's been on the book for a year, and it's holding up some of the projects here in town.
That's not necessarily true either. If you actually go through them, those aren't drainage issues that are holding up those projects either. It's a totally different on topic than what we're talking about, but that is not the issue.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm just telling you, we had a hang-up with Whataburger on drainage deals. I see on the storage buildings, every one of them has a deal that their still has not been approved.
Every one of them does, and we could sit here all night and point fingers. But here's what I can tell you, is it's not all drainage, and it's not all about the city. And even if it is, and if we're right, then we're right. You're just assuming that we're wrong. And again, we're talking about 766 ordinances. I'm not talking about drainage ordinance. She said to save those to the end, so hopefully can get a grant and have some educated people that can do that for us, because yes, I can't do engineering or draining or anything like that. When we have a fence that's built 3.4, 3 and 1/2 feet in front of the house that doesn't face the road, that's not the intent of the ordinance. It's for safety issues, for PD, as well as other things, that that needs to be on the roadside, not on the front when it faces the neighbors. So there's millions, a lot more in there than just drainage inside the ordinances.
I don't disagree with you. I said I just wanted to look at it.
And I'm not willing to spend, you know, $250 to $300 an hour on an attorney to review our 700 ordinances when that is something that can be done by citizens in the city. We, as citizens of this community, we know what's best for our community, not an attorney that doesn't know anything about Gun Barrel. I don't think it's necessary. It feels like an excessive expense. That's just unnecessary.
I will echo that, and then the discussions that we had about our budget to bring up another expense that we don't really have to incur, because we have plenty of people. And we don't even know who the appointees are. So we're really not qualified to say that these people aren't qualified to make these decisions, because you haven't heard the names and you haven't heard the individuals. So that's a little presumptuous on our part. And as a point of order, I will just say that I think adding any money, more expenses to the budget right now is just not prudent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I make a comment, please?
Yes, sir.
I did, the one concern I had about this is that many of these ordinances have been on the books for a number of years. The state legislature meets by annually, and there may have been some significant changes made in the local ordinance code that we are not aware of that affect these ordinances. This is why I did favor having some legal representation to look at this and bring us up to date on the legal aspects of all of what we're trying to do. I agree that it's important to have the ordinances that the best we can from the city of Gun Barrel, but we also need to make sure that we're up to date on them in terms of the legal status from the state legislature. Thank you.
Thank you.
And while I don't disagree with that, but I think that's what our city attorney does.
But the point is, I have no problem with having a review committee for the fences and stuff, but the technical stuff, we might need to get out.
Absolutely.
That's all I'm saying.
Absolutely. But we'll keep tabling this and keep pushing it down the road.
Would you like me to, how would you like me to state it? Would you like me to send this to the, and let's look at it and come back with it? I'm not wanting to get rid of it.
But I know, but we keep bringing it up, and it keeps not passing for the exact same reason every single time. So if there is a way that you suggest that we do it differently, she said to pull the land usage. That's what the drainage is under, the land usage. And she said to move the land usage to the end, so it would be the very last thing. And hopefully by then, we would have, we applied for a grant from GrantWorks, and then it would help us, I think GrantWorks, but it would help us to do that. So there's no doubt that we're going to need some educated people throughout this in different areas and stuff. There's no question about that. But we can't, you know, I don't know how you pick and choose which ordinance that the committee could do and not do the rest. I don't know what you could do to make you happy to get, so we could do this.
I would also add to this. We had a special meeting over this, and we all came to an agreement that this is what we were going to do, and now we're kind of backtracking again. So we're not, I mean, I don't want to have, I don't want to be wasting council's time, and I don't want to be wasting staff's time. If we're going to have these special meetings, and we're going to come to these agreements, then we need to follow through the next time that we have a city council meeting. Now we have completely about-faced. And again, I'm never a fan for kicking things down the road. And a point of order, again, I will reiterate, with a budget the way that we have currently, and with certain council members that were very, very adamant about how tight it was, and they had a lot of opinions about it, these are now the same council individuals that now want to spend more money. And I just find that very, very, it's very confusing. And I think if there's any other discussion.
Very frustrating. And at this point, I don't want to have this conversation every month. So I propose that we just start taking a section of the ordinances and working through them ourselves at each, either a special meeting or a council meeting or something, because we're not, we're not going to get any farther on this issue. But it is something that needs to be done, and so if we have to sit here and do it ourselves, we need to get started.
Y'all shake your hands.
You, you.
Are y'all going to be the one that's doing it?
Yes, because remember, when we had our.
Reviewing ordinances? Y'all shaking your heads. Are y'all reviewing ordinances?
No, you're the one that said you know about the fence. I don't have a problem with the fence, but you would know that. And I don't, you know, she has her.
It's not that, it's a problem for me. It was a problem that the citizen thought she was doing the right thing. She looked up in the ordinance and saw six foot, so she put up a six-foot fence, only to be told, oops, over here says that it'll only be three and a half on the front. And of course, so there are problems in those. It's not that I have a problem with them. I'm just trying to help the citizens to not have these problems.
My point is, you understand that. You know, you understand her problem. Now, I've been here forever, and I've never ran across that problem or an issue. But you have, so you would know what to think about it.
I know, but that's why you have to help people, the help, the more eyes you have to see, that's fine. But, you know, you're all up here saying, yeah, let's all go, Jennifer's suggesting that we all go home and take a few of them. You're saying, yeah, well, y'all are not going to go home and read ordinances and.
I will also remind the council that when we had our special meeting, that we all said we didn't really have the time as a council to be spending on all of these. And every one of us here at this dais spoke to that. So now if we have a change of heart, then I guess we have a change of heart, but I just, I find it.
Discouraging.
Very discouraging.
Well, I did speak to the city manager early on and ask her if she could check in to some legal fees that we might need. And I don't think the person she checked with never got back with her. But I did ask that in the very beginning, before the other suggestion was made.
Well, I know, but we're speaking on what's before us right now. Councilman, and that is between $200 and $300 an hour, which is, Councilman Burson is proposing.
Well, I don't know. No one ever got back with the city manager, so I don't know. But I wouldn't spend a whole lot, but I think we do need legal help on some of them.
I agree with that. And she sent an email out, said there are 766 ordinances total, give or take. And of that, 264 are land usage. So out of the 264s, where you're going to have your drainage and all those kinds of things. So 75% of the ordinances are three sentences or less, and those are the ones that, you know, we wanted to go through. You get the land usage for the end. And as we go through this, I mean, you're acting like we're going to go out here and just pick 10 random people, and we're just going to let them go run away with it. I mean, we're going to have, the department heads are having input. I mean, they're educated, they're running code enforcement, or Street Department, PD, whatever it may be, has their input as well. And again, if they, if it's engineers, when we get to the drainage problem, then it's engineers that we talk to. Maybe we ask our engineer for input when we get to that point.
Well, I've got a book of all of the ordinances up until like 2022. And some of them I do read, and you've been over and you've read them.
Mm-hmm.
I do have one issue, but I wouldn't form a committee to solve it. But I understand what you're saying. But like I said, I think somewhere along the line, we're going to have to have some kind of legal, whether it's our attorney or someone else, their opinion on, is it legal today or is it not?
Well, I think if you're talking about state stuff, I think he does that as we go. And I think, and I may be wrong, city manager can tell us, but I assume if we were to rewrite an ordinance, it would go to the attorney for review. Is that correct?
It would, yes. And that is the purpose of our city attorney. So the legislature does meet every couple of years, and they are coming on their next legislative session. And both TML and the TML attorneys and our city attorney then push those law changes down to the cities to make sure that we are meeting with those. So I'm a part of the TML legislation committee and go up every year after to get the wrap-up for them. We did a kickoff just this summer at the TEDC Small Cities Conference. They'll do a big kickoff to tell us what's on the plate of the legislature. So if this is tabled, we can bring it back to the next meeting and discuss it again. But I did reach out, as Ms. Evans mentioned, I did reach out to Civic Plus. Civic Plus does this. Civic Plus is our website provider. But I have not heard back. I've tried three times. I've called them and put their help ticket in and sent them emails, and they have not responded. Now, it is a service they say they provide, but they have not responded to me. Again, I think I shared with council, I've done this in a recent community where we did specifically our land uses. We did our development code. We paid an organization over $300,000 over three years to bring in a stakeholder group of about 22 people, 25 people, and go through one by one. I, you know, if this ordinance doesn't pass tonight, staff will continue to go through these one by one. It is extremely time-consuming, and we're addressing issues is all we're doing. We're not reading them all to make sure that they're what's best for Gun Barrel.
Well, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Smith, but no one is going to be writing any ordinances. This is just a review committee. And to make suggestions at that time, if they made a suggestion, it would be reviewed by someone as an expert in that particular field. Is that correct?
So think about this like the Charter Review Commission, that is called out in the charter. So you would appoint, and this is exactly how the Charter Review Commission, I don't know if anybody in here was on that, but this is exactly how the Charter Review Commission worked. They look at our charter, they look at other city charters, same with the Bylaw Review Commission for the EDC. They look at our ordinance. They would then look at another city's ordinance, see what might be different, see what recommendations they might have. That group would then settle on what the final language was. It then gets reviewed by our attorney. It then comes to city council for further discussion. So that is the process. If you have an ordinance review committee, it would look very, very similar to a charter review committee. They would just go one group at a time. We did it with the Charter Review Commission. We put them on a schedule. We said we're going to do this section at this meeting. Everybody went awry, looked at all the compared different stuff, asked questions. Some of your, to be honest, some of your best suggestions just come from the conversation that that group of 12 have to, and they, you know, they decide what finally comes to both the attorney. We did the same with the Charter Review Commission. The attorney reviewed it, and then it came to city council to go before the public for a vote.
Well, I will also add that I know personally, one of the gentlemen that I was going to recommend has done this all his life and is an expert in this area. So I think we were very presumptuous in saying we don't need a committee, and we can't get 12 people to really agree, and we don't, we don't know that, because we don't know the people, and we haven't put them together. And I think to not give the citizens an opportunity, and then, again, to put more burden on our staff that already is small but mighty, I will use that word, and I think is, when we have an opportunity to involve citizens, to involve qualified citizens, I would say. And I don't think that anyone on this dais right here would ever suggest anybody that wouldn't be qualified to be a part of anything like this. So I just think it's very, very presumptuous that we made a statement like that, and then we've, we've.
I would like to respond to that. I'm talking about the ordinance on the drainage deal. That's all I was regarding. I didn't say there hadn't qualified citizens to do that.
Okay, this is eight G. I will repeat it again as a point of order. Consider and take action to adopt resolution number R dash two zero two four dash zero one one, establishing an ordinance review committee. I don't see anything in there, Councilman Burson, on drainage.
But it is in our ordinances, correct?
That's, I'm reading the resolution, which is what we're talking about right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Further discussion? Moving on. Eight H. Consider and take action to make appointments to the ordinance review committee. Obviously, we're probably going to move on from that.
Mayor, you will need a motion and a vote to table this item as well.
I think we did get one.
We already did that.
Oh, to table the second thing as well? Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So I will ask for a motion.
I'll have to make the motion to table it. I'm not going to make the motion to table it.
Yeah, we've already voted on it.
You voted on it to take, to table the resolution.
Okay, I make a motion to table eight H., which is consider and take action to appoint appointees to the ordinance review board.
I have a motion and a second. Vote from my left, please.
Burns, no.
Evan, yes.
Jacobs, no.
Burson, yes.
Boss, yes.
Passes. Moving on. Eight I. Consider and take action to make appointments to the Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. Speaking on this agenda item will be our city manager, again, Dr. Smith.
Counsel, in the works, the special meeting right before this meeting, council met to discuss the candidates. What I will read for you is the list that council, the council members present, there were three council members and the mayor present. I will read to you the nominations from those. Mayor, you will then need a motion. You will need to discuss and then take your vote, right? So you have an opportunity to discuss it, since we have some members that are.
On each individual.
On each individual item. So we'll start with BOA. I believe that's the first one.
It's not on there.
Wait a minute. Economic Development Corp. The Economic Development Corp. is the consensus at the meeting from council, and this was Roy Key. consensus at the meeting from council, and this was Roy Key, Linda Rankin, Lisa Matthews, and Sue Alexander.
Are we making a motion on each individual?
You can make one motion to name those four people.
Okay, I do not have those four people in front of me, so I will just say, do we have a motion for those four appointees?
Well, I make a motion to appoint Roy Key, Linda Rankin, Lisa Matthews, Sue Alexander to the Economic Development Corporation.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Jacobs, second.
I have a second. Vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evan, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes.
Foster, yes.
Passes. Congratulations to those individuals. 8J, consider and take action to make appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Again, on this agenda item, our city manager, Dr. Smith.
For the planning and zoning, I did just realize BOA is not on your agenda, so that will be back at your October meeting for appointments. I'm not sure how Janet and I missed that one, but we only ended up with EDC Planning and Zoning in parks. So the consensus from council at the special meeting at the beginning of the night was to, there are four vacancies on planning and zoning, to appoint Ava Towner and Scott Coleman and come back, repost that position, and take applications again for the Planning and Zoning Commission. That would leave two vacancies. You would still have a quorum at your meetings. So Ava Towner and Scott Coleman.
I move that we nominate Ava Towner and Scott Coleman.
I could not understand what she's saying. Could you repeat, who are the?
Can you repeat that? City manager for, Mr. Foster?
Planning and zoning, Mr. Foster has four openings. The consensus among the members that were at the early meeting were to appoint Ava Towner and Scott Coleman and leave the other two positions vacant and repost for applications.
I would nominate Rob Ray to that, Planning and Zoning.
I disagree. We have a motion on the table, correct?
Yes.
I will second that motion.
Vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes. Jennifer.
For Ava Towner and Scott Coleman. Jacobs, yes.
Burson, no.
What is the motion?
Ms. Foster, so what we have on the agenda right now is we are appointing two people and then leaving, and those two people are Ava Towner and Scott Coleman. We are leaving two vacancies on that board. We still have a quorum on that board, but we are leaving those two vacancies to be able to come back to. Now, we have votes on the dais of a yes, a yes, a yes, and a no.
Well, now the question is, we had a third candidate there that had apparently been omitted for whatever reason. Why would we be doing that and ask the two more if we don't consider all the people that have applied?
They've been considered.
They've been considered.
And this is our decision, so.
So your vote, please, Mr. Foster.
So, is it my understanding that Rob Ray is no longer on this list?
He is not part of the nominate, or the motion.
No. Do you need me to repeat the motion to you again? I would be happy to. Is that a yes or a no? Councilman Foster. Yes or no, please, sir?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, sir.
I'd say no on the motion if he's being omitted.
Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on. 8K, consider and take action to make appointments to the Park Board. Our city manager again, Dr. Smith, will speak to this agenda item.
So we had three openings, and we had two re-applications, if that's the right word, and one new application. This would be Foster Brady, Shelley Coleman, and Renetta Burson.
I move that we seat Foster Brady, Shelley Coleman, and Renetta Burson.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? A motion and a second. Vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evan, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Recuse.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes.
Counsel, I apologize about BOA. We will have that on the October meeting.
All right. Moving forward now. Number nine, Planning and Zoning. I will now open a public hearing on a request from Lily DeGarmo to grant a special use permit to perform permanent cosmetics at ETX Inject Cosmetics and Wellness, physically located at 1829 West Main Street, Gun Barrel City, Texas. Is someone here to speak to that? Can you come to the podium, please? Thank you.
This is, this is the public hearing. I think you want to speak under the agenda item. Unless you have a public, that's the, that's the applicant mayor, so she will speak under the agenda.
Anybody?
Questions? Open?
It's closed. Now, at 9B, consider and take action to adopt ordinance number 0-2024-026, granting a change in zoning to General Business District B2, subject to a special use permit to perform permanent makeup, cosmetic tattooing at ETX Inject Cosmetics and Wellness, physically located at 1829 West Main Street, Gun Barrel City, Texas. Speaking on this agenda item will be our city planner, Brooke Atkinson.
Mayor, this is our new city planner, Brittany Lewis, her first presentation to council.
I, I, I apologize.
She has an amazing trainer in Brooke Atkinson, but Brittany stepped up and wanted to do this presentation, and so she and Brooke put it together. And Brittany is now going to do her first presentation to council.
Good evening. So I'm going to go over the timeline of events. We received the application on August the 27th. The public hearing notice was sent to the paper on August the 30th. The letters were mailed to the property owners within 200 feet of the property on August the 30th. Public hearing notice was published in the paper for the Planning and Zoning and City Council meeting on September the 8th, 2024, which is at least 15 days prior to the city council meeting. On September the 9th, Planning and Zoning made the recommendation to grant a special use permit to perform permanent cosmetics at ETX Inject Cosmetics and Wellness by Lily DeGarmo. And tonight is the regular city council meeting. I sent out 11 letters and received zero letters in response. This will be located at 1829 West Main Street. Here's the view of the location from the street. ETX Inject Cosmetic and Wellness operates without offering permanent cosmetics. This special use permit is to add the service to the current existing business. As indicated on the submitted application, the operational hours are Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Saturday, 9:00 to 12:00 p.m. In ordinance number 156.041, General Business District B2, tattoo studios are permitted by a special use permit. In Texas, permanent cosmetic tattooing is regulated by the Department of State Health Services and requires a tattooing license to perform. Since this requires a tattoo license to perform permanent cosmetic procedures, we consider this a tattoo studio, which is granted with a special use permit by the city council and recommended by Planning and Zoning. Under ordinance 156.094, tattoo studios, in addition to complying with the regular requirements applicable to such establishments within the B2 district, two certain specific regulations must also adhere to. A, tattoo studios are prohibited from operating within 1,000 feet of any church, public, or private school, or residential zoning district. This distance is measured in a straight line from the nearest part of the tattoo studio's premises to the nearest property line of a church or school, or the nearest boundary of a residential district or lot. However, you, the city council, has the authority to reduce or waive the separation distance if it is determined that the tattoo studio's operation would not pose a threat to public health, safety, welfare, or if it would not be offensive to the neighborhood. B, tattoo studios must consistently maintain compliance with all Texas state laws concerning such establishments. This particular applicant's proposed permanent cosmetics is situated within close proximity of two churches that are highlighted in yellow, and three residential subdivisions that are highlighted in blue. The city council is currently viewing a 1,000-foot boundary map of, from this location, as mandated by Section 156.094 regulations, which required adherence to specific distance requirements from such establishments and zoning districts. The applicant's location is approximately within 730 feet from the Beacon Church of Christ that's located at 146 Harbor Point Road. The applicant's location is approximately within 950 feet from Life Sanctuary located at 1623 West Main Street, and approximately 400 feet from any existing residence's front door in a residential area. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and the applicant is also here as well. Thank you.
I did a terrible job of introducing you, but that was an incredible presentation. You did a great job. Thank you very much. Questions for staff, please.
I have a question. So we're not just granting a special use permit, we're also granting a change in zoning, is that correct?
That is not correct, no. That is located in the B2 business area.
That's what the paperwork says.
Counsel? Nope, you. Yes. Yes. I think because the zoning calls out specifically the tattoo is why it's worded that way. I asked that question the first time this happened, and I was like, Janet, and she said, no, that's how the language is written, because it is a special use permit. So it is, for all practical purposes, the way the city attorney explained it, an exception to the current zoning, right? So the zoning says you can have this with a special use permit. It's a great question, Ms. Burns, but that's why it's worded the way it's worded. That is still zoned B2. This is just, it's not a variance. It's an exception to B2 zoning with a special use permit.
And if the owner of it, the property, or the owner of the business changes, it doesn't stay. It goes away. So a zoning change would be permanent. This, if the owner changes or anything, the, it would, it would go away.
You might remember that with our last tattoo studio. The owner applied for it, then she got out of the business, and we had to redo that same thing, but.
The special use permit stays with the person who applied for it, and if they are no longer there, it goes away. But the verbiage here, I was just asking.
Nope, it's a great question.
Any further questions, Ms. Lewis, or the applicant?
The applicant is here and happy to explain if you guys have any questions.
If none, I will ask for a motion.
I move that we adopt ordinance number O-2024-026, granting a change in zoning to General Business District B2, subject to a special use permit to perform permanent makeup, cosmetic tattoo, and at ETX Inject Cosmetics and Wellness, physically located at 1829 West Main Street, Gun Barrel City, Texas.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Jacobs, second.
I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. A vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evan, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes. Moving to Economic Development, 10A, consider and take action to approve an engagement letter with Donald Almond for auditing services for the EDC for fiscal year 2024-25. I have someone as my, Dr. Smith will now be our, other hat on, and she will be the EDC director.
So this is just our annual agreement for our audit. We sign them annually over at the EDC. So Mr. Almond provided his engagement letter, and the EDC did approve this fully at their meeting.
Is this the same auditing services they had last year?
It is the same auditing services this year. If you will remember in their bylaws, they did bump up the rule by when the audit has to be presented to the EDC board, and he is aware of that and has agreed to make sure. I believe it's either February or March. In the bylaws, there is a caveat of when those financials have to be, year-end financial, audited financials have to be approved, and he has agreed to that as well. I believe it is March, but I would have to verify that. It's either February or March. March? The president is nodding his head. It is March.
Questions for staff? Discussion? If none, I will ask for a motion.
I move that we approve an engagement letter with Donald Almond for auditing services for the EDC for fiscal year 2425.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Take a vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evan, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes. 10B, consider and take action to adopt resolution number R-2024-009, approving the Gun Barrel City EDC Large Business Incentive Policy. I will read into the, into the record the resolution. Resolution number R-2024-009, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Gun Barrel City, Texas, approving the Gun Barrel City EDC Large Business Incentive Policy and providing for an immediate effective date. Speaking on this will be our EDC director, Dr. Smith.
So following the council work session, so a little history about this. As, as most of you know, we've, we've talked through this. We talked through it at our work session, but I want to be clear, considering someone made comments tonight regarding this item. The EDC appointed, if memory serves me right, a loan and grant subcommittee last January, January of 2024, to really look at those. We had had these programs on hold. There were a number of issues. We have, we still have a lot of outstanding issue with the current loans we have out. Our grants have cleaned themselves up. And so the Loan and Grant Committee started having subcommittee meetings. And we started with a lot of the items that Mr. McCullough mentioned today, you know, setting prime, setting what the interest rate was, setting what requirements there were. In May or June, and I had this conversation at the work session, in May or June, I attended the EDC mid-year conference and visited with a number of different, highly qualified, highly successful economic development directors around the state of Texas. And we, I came back with, to the subcommittee, which consisted of, I've lost words today, consisted of Mr. Ligon and Mr. McCullough, a new option that, that got rid of the boxes that we had in place, which was, here's a loan program, and here's the guidelines by which it falls, and here's a incentive, here's a grant, and this is what you have to do if you want a grant. And we presented, I presented these policies to that subcommittee. It isn't a program. It is a policy which sets an umbrella for programs to exist under. Mr. Ligon and Mr. McCullough then took those, pretty much what you see in front of you tonight, to the EDC in a special work session. They introduced those. We walked through them. They heard much the same spill from me that I presented you at your last special meeting, which is, our goal, and the EDC's goal with this, was to create an umbrella under which we could build programs that could be different for each applicant. I sent an email to council today and clarified that while it doesn't set, this is what the percentage rate would be, what this policy does is allow someone to. percentage rate would be, what this policy does is allow someone to apply for a large business incentive, and it provides a lot of options, some we could never do, some we're not going to have the fee, the ability to do with the, the amount of money that the EDC gets, but it provides the umbrella under which two candidates could both apply for large business incentives, apply, say, for a $100,000 loan. The small business incentive is very specific, they are reimbursement grants. Two businesses could then apply, and the Board could meet with them, that, that one, they meet monthly, the small business, they meet quarterly, because those are reimbursement grants, and then be allowed to come up with a program that works for that business. And so, the example that I have used, both with the Committee and, and with the, the EDC, is if I have huge financial backing, and I come to the table, and I can show you that I'm an experienced business owner, I have all of these things in place, I have this financial backing in place, maybe I get a lower interest rate than someone that comes to the table as a brand-new business that doesn't have a business plan, that I have a lot of hopes and dreams, but I don't have a lot of success in that area. This policy then allows the EDC, and then council, to make a decision based on a lot of those factors, instead of locking in, it has to be 2% for everybody, which is what our current, our current program is right now, we have programs. And so, it allows, there, there is a lot of criteria under which, there are a lot of variations in there, and we may not be able to do all, but we may be able to partner with the county in some things. That's not uncommon in economic development, for you to partner with the county, and, you know, maybe there's incentives from the county, and that we can work that out. But, just to clarify, the small business incentive would be reviewed quarterly, that is a grant reimbursement program where you would apply for a certain amount to do exterior incentive, interior incentive, work on your marketing, work on your workforce development, or in public disasters. So, at the council's special work session, two different things came up. The first was, in the event of a public disaster, could we wait 90 days, right? Could we wait a full quarter? And so, I made that change today, it did not make it into, I, I had those conversations again with council in my one-on-ones last week, and heard some of the concerns, and we talked through some of those concerns, so I made that amendment to, over the weekend, that in the event of a publicly declared disaster, and that means that we have a decla, it's not that my building burns down, but that is geared specifically at a public disaster, tornado, a flood, something where, you know, recently the county declared a disaster when the storm came through, that the Board may meet as needed. So, that doesn't bump that to a quarter, so if it is a public disaster, the Board can call their incentive task force to the table and say, we have these businesses, we need to see how we can help them get back open. I've lived through a tornado, most of you know that, my city got hit, and it will shut down an entire city, and Gunbarrel doesn't need that to happen, so we want to be able to act quick. The second thing in the small business that was a question is, there was a sentence that said, "The incentive program excludes national franchises." I, I truly believe they were excluded because this is the small business, not the large business, but at the request of council following that meeting, I simply deleted that sentence, which doesn't, you know, if, if a target wanted to come in, the, the reasoning is, if a target wanted to come in and they wanted a $25,000 sign grant, we're going to do what we can do to get target here, right? And so, I don't want that to be a caveat, if that's all they asked for, that we put ourselves in that situation. So, there's two special notes on here, just to clarify some things. The small business incentive is reviewed quarterly, the large business incentive is reviewed once a month, that allows us to act very quickly. I did send kind of a calendar to council today to walk through that, how quick could you get money if you wanted money? And it's not that quick, it would take a while if they submitted a perfect, but, but there's also a state law that says that we have to wait 60 days after the first public notice. I did talk to a partner that does this in another city, and, you know, she let me know that the reason they do that is because they want the public to have time to challenge that before you fund it, right? And I think you guys have experienced that, so that's the reason for the 60 days. But again, you know, this, I, I think the most important thing I can tell council is, this is a policy, not a program, right? And a policy then sets the bar that you develop programs under, and it takes us out of a box that my only option is to either get a $25,000 reimbursement where you're going to pay me half, or $100,000 loan, which is what our current programs allow you to do. That is the only two options. Anything other than that would have to happen outside that program, and these policies just set the standard. And so, I want to be clear, because I feel like tonight in public comment, there was some information given, these are the policies that our Subcommittee took to the EDC, these are the policies that the EDC reviewed in their workshop, and then approved in their meeting. Nothing has been changed by staff or any of the EDC members since these were presented to the EDC in their special workshop, or they were approved at the EDC meeting. And I'm happy to answer any questions, I know we talked about this at length, so...
I just got a couple of questions. I was on the EDC loan from the start, the Loan and Grant Committee, all the way up to time of being on council, and in these committees, we talked about setting something above prime, we tried to come up with a number, we tried to figure out some way to get some collateral, to have some performance bonds, collateral, some way to secure the loan's insurance, if they're, if they're, if we're doing a home-owned business, we need to be a rider on that insurance, so if that house burns down, we can get some of our money back, some of the taxpayers' money back, while still helping these businesses grow here in Gunbarrel. But after reviewing, I just didn't understand, but after reviewing these documents, you're telling me that these are a policy, but all the stuff that we worked on, where is that applied? Where are we reassured? Because there's a lot of loans out there right now that are on personal guarantees, we have nothing other than a personal guarantee to...
So, that is something that the policy sets the umbrella for, and then the EDC would work with each individual applicant to decide how they would request that information based on the application, right? So, there's a lot of information, there's, there's almost a page and a half list of things that the applicant has to provide. If they're just looking for a $100,000 loan, it opens the door for the EDC to look at their financials, and to have that discussion, and then set what the interest rate is. It does not lock in, it's going to be 2% over prime, or it's going to be 2%.
But, but, but we're still, we're still loaning money at 2%, correct?
We are not currently, no, that, that is a program.
But that is the policy as it stands right now, right?
That is your loan program right now, is that, and we have not taken any loan or grant applications.
I know, but that's why we were going through this, to reestablish this. This document has nothing, nothing of that...
It doesn't, because it's, it's the, it's the policy that then allows the EDC to meet with the business, to decide what the situation is for that specific business. So, you know, if the EDC wanted to set it at prime plus two, they could. If they wanted to give a loan at 2%, they could make that recommendation to council, and I think the most important thing to understand is, any recommendation prior to a performance agreement being issued is going to come to council for discussion. Jay, I would argue that your EDC doesn't want unsecured loans either, because that's what we spend 90% of our time doing, is trying to collect them. And so, but this doesn't outline that specifically, it just says, you have some freedom in here based on the finances of the business, the history of the business, to set that at whatever is best for the EDC. And the EDC would review that application, the EDC would then make a recommendation to council through a performance agreement, the performance agreement specifically would call out each of those items, and then council would approve that performance agreement as well.
Well, I just know that in, in the past, I'm not trying to go back to the past, I know some people don't like that, but I'm just going from where we've been. I don't see how we can borrow money at a higher rate than we're lending it.
I, I don't disagree with you.
And we've done that, and that's why I'm trying to get some policies that make sense to me.
But I think what she's trying to say is, that each individual's situation is going to be different, okay? And this gives the EDC some flexibility, and gives us a little flexibility to work with people, okay, and to set some of those. There's, there's not going to be a one-size-fits-all, that's just not going to happen.
Well, so you're saying that, depending on the Board that we have seated over there, they can do anything, there's no requirement that they have to get a bond, there's no requirement that they have to get any kind of protection for the taxpayers' money under this policy?
I'm saying that the Board that is appointed by council has the flexibility to set the guidelines for each performance agreement, and then council approves that performance agreement. So, ultimately, if it comes to council, and council isn't happy with the guidelines that they set forth, then you can reject it and send it back to them for further discussion. So, yes, I'm saying that the seven people appointed by City Council to sit on that EDC Board have the flexibility to make a recommendation to council for each business, given the circumstances that business is in.
May I comment?
Go right ahead.
Looking at the document, it is, it is very general. I, I think what is missing here is, if a company comes in, or an organization wanting to work with EDC, they do need some basic guidelines of where we stand regarding interest rate, payback, and so forth, and it's not there. If that's not there, they come in, and this has to be reworked every time through the Committee. I think we need some baseline information that the Board should have provided to this document, that will set the standards of what an organization requesting funds would expect us to be looking at. If we don't do that, I, I'm afraid that what we'll do is, the, the new committee will change over time, and we'll have, and we'll have different targets there to work from, it's how they might view it. I think that's a mistake, I think to be more businesslike, we do need to set target guidelines there, that anybody coming in, this is what they would, that's what they would expect to work within those parameters. Thank you.
I, well, I just think that we've seat seven people on that EDC Board to make these decisions, and I understand that we don't always make, I don't think anyone intentionally makes bad decisions, but if I was to walk in a bank today and say, hey, how much are you going to, how much are you going to loan me on this, on $100,000, do you think he's going to have an answer for me? Is he going to have an interest rate right then and there? No, because why? He has to get any more information about me. What's my credit score look like? What's my financials look like? What am I going to do with this money? I mean, a whole bunch of more information, and I think that's what we're giving the EDC the right to do as well, so that they can go through and look at what that person has. And, and if this collateral is what the EDC feels like that needs to happen, then I'm sure the EDC is going to say, I want hazard insurance on that building, if it's for a building. But to set a standard, when we, when everyone comes in with a different want or need, is very hard to do that. Some things maybe, I mean, I know this isn't what we're supposed to do, but I know we've given loans in the past that paid off another loan, well, what do you expect them to insure at that point? I mean, I think we just have to put our trust in the EDC, the people that we have placed in those positions, and again, that's going to come to council for approval at the end.
Are we on the large incentive policy, or the small?
We are on the large.
That's what I thought.
And I, and I discuss them as a whole, so we wouldn't separate them out, and I'm happy to answer questions about the large, that's the agenda topic we're on, but, I mean, I, I think Councilman Burns is exactly right, that is, that is, you are appointing members to that Board. We could set procedure, if, if council has a desire to do that. It's, this is the policy, and we could put together a, a procedure manual, if you will. I would argue that you're putting more steps in process when you want to have that flexibility, because you might, you know, you, you made special concessions when Elder came in, we may have made special concessions when Lowe's came in. This gives us the ability, and not just the EDC, the EDC and council, I, I am employed by both, by both, gives both Boards the ability to have conversations. If council wanted to appoint a special committee of, of not a quorum, to, to review these before they came to council, council could do that. These policies just build the umbrella, and don't lock us into every single person, because, because there's one I'm going to tell you, you have a loan and grant program now, this is your, this is your city manager talking, you have a loan and grant program now, but we've gone around it a number of times, and partnered with folks, and, and we've got a lot of people with creative, that, that are interested in applying, that have creative problems, and our solution to solve creative problems is, we have to have a creative tool in place, and if, if your EDC Board is so far off from council's wishes, that they can't make a good recommendation to council, that is another issue.
Yes, that's right.
Go right ahead.
Well, I would, I would just like, somewhere in some of our documents in this building, there should be a document that says, we need to require a bond, or some kind of security on some of these loans we make, and there's not that I know of, there may be somewhere, but...
She just wanted to be a requirement, that, that no matter what it is to, and I'm not saying that they shouldn't, because I know that we have had some troubles in the past, or whatever, but...
I know we've done that in the past, I mean, we recently released one that was secured by a life insurance policy, so, I mean, I'm happy to amend the, the verbiage for the, the resolution, so that we can add, add wording like that in.
But I think that's what the, the ordinance, and correct me, please, EDC Director, if I'm wrong, it, it all follows under that umbrella, am I, am I misunderstanding?
It does not. It, it allows...
So, if it's under that umbrella, I think, again, all of us up here, working to dispel the image that we have of how hard we are to work with, and how hard we are to deal with, we can, we can, all of those things that, that Councilman Foster said, we can, we can deal with those on an as, as-needed basis, and each individual will come under that type of scrutiny. I think, again, just to put a bunch of blanket things down is, is limiting, and, and I personally like, like the way it's written.
I'll tell you that I had a lot of conversations at the mid-year EDC conference with directors from around the state, that are recognized in doing this, right? This is, this is what they do. I'm, I'm, I'm a great city manager, I'm an okay EDC Director, we've made a lot, we have, we have jumped a lot of hurdles since October when I started, and that EDC has come a very long way, and that's not just me, that is with the help of the Board, and Stephen Barnett is a rock star. But you have to remember that the more lockdown you make the program, the more you are warning people from participating. So, you know, we can say, hey, we're not going to give you a loan without a performance bond, if, and I'm not even sure that's the right word, I'm not sure you're getting a performance bond, but with some kind of collateral, right? That's not what a performance bond does, but we're going to, we're going to require collateral. But if Chick-fil-A walked in today and said, we want to open a Chick-fil-A here, but we need $100,000, and Chick-fil-A is Chick-fil-A, right? Is that the same as, I want to open a snow cone shop, and I need $100,000? And I think that's what these policies allow you to do, is, is meet each person where they are, to attempt to, and that's, that's how creative EDCs are getting, to have to get things. And once you've got the policies in place, then you have the ability to say, you know, hey, we want collateral in this form or fashion, and, and performance bond isn't the right word, because that's not collateral, but that's, you know, whatever that collateral looks like, whatever percentage of that loan is, and so...
And some of the things I think, when we're talking about collateral, isn't going to satisfy, I think, the concern. I'm assuming your concern is like with people not paying their bills, right? So, if you put a, put them on a mortgage, you build a building, or add on to a building, and say, I want to be, I want your insurance to be listed on your insurance, well, if they don't pay their bill, that ain't going to change anything on the insurance, you're sure not going to collect any money from that, unless there's damage to that building. You know, so again, if you're just trying to ensure payment from a, from a person, no one can do that. If that's the case, banks would never go bankrupt, and they'd never have any issues. You've just got to make good decisions, and make good loans, and then you can't put all, the EDC presents it, and then the City Council approves it.
I understand, but with the, the deal on the insurance you just said, I just said, if we loan money to somebody, and, and we're using, basically, the building is collateral, we ought to be a cosigner on that insurance, because if that building burns, we need to be able to get some of that money, because that's part of our collateral, that's all I'm asking for.
No, I agree with that, I was just saying, if your concern was them not paying, is what I was saying. If, if that's not your concern, I understand, being added to a person's policies, because it's kind of like you're being a mortgage, right? You're, you're doing a mortgage, but I think at the time, depending on the amount of money that's being loaned to that certain individual, is, again, where we leave that to the EDC to, to make that decision. And again, we can recommend, it can come to us, you can look at it, and you can say, you know, we're getting $100,000 to build a building right here, that's a lot of money in a building, we want to be on the insurance, it doesn't cost them anything to put them as, on mortgage, you on the insurance, you know? But that's something I think that the EDC can request, and if... But that's something I think that the EDC can request, and if we wanted that, ask them to do so.
So basically, these policies that are written on the big and the small just leaves up, leaves everything to the board that we have appointed to make decisions, you would hope.
To make recommendations to the city council, yes.
Which comes to us.
Mayor, because this is an easy EDC topic, the EDC president is here, and he would like to speak.
I think one of the things that I'd like to point out is what we looked at is what we have in place does not preclude the things that you're talking about. I have no arguments with that at all. We've got to have something in place to make the program have some teeth. I agree with that. But what we've got to do is have an overall program. Right now, we've got a cookie cutter out there, and if it don't fit the cookie cutter, it don't work. Now we've got something where we can work with a, with a Chick-fil-A versus a Longhorn Steakhouse versus a Mom and Pop Tattoos Parlor, whatever. And I don't, I'm not trying to disparage any, any business, but I'm saying the way it works right now, we can come up and put in place, get your approval to allow us to put in place requirements to, to a performance bond, or put up a collateral for us that, that is something that we can absolutely exercise on, something that's not going to cost us so much to do it. But some way that we have in the bag, a guarantee that what they say they're going to do is going to happen. If it doesn't, then our money comes back. And that's, that, this gives us that latitude. This gives us the umbrella with, to, to get under and to work with. If anybody has any questions, I'm just telling you from the standpoint of how we looked at it, we were excited about it from the standpoint that it gave us a, a penumbra under which to, to, to work. And it is something that is a lot more, not touchy-feely, but something that's out there that we know that we can't go any further than this, but we know that we at least can go that far. If, when you're bringing in a business, correct me if I'm wrong, Jay, if you're bringing in a business, there are certain businesses you want, and there are certain businesses you tolerate, and there are certain businesses you really don't want them. I mean, it would be cannibalizing the existing business, or it would be dragging down their current status quo. We want to have the ability to deal with these folks. We want to be able to go out and recruit your Chick-fil-A's, your Longhorn Steakhouses, Texas Roadhouse, something like that. And if that involves building them a sign, build them a sign. If that involves giving them a, a stipend over 10 years like we, the agreement we had with Lowe's, well, this, we'll bring that to the forefront. But that's something, nothing that we bring to the table is ever going to be put into place without you guys looking at it and putting your stamp of approval on it.
Absolutely. I would also caution, I just want to be on the record as having said this, when it gets to this council, I want us, again, always doing and putting our best foot forward what's best for the city and not using this as a weapon in any way against any developer. I just want to be on record to say that.
Absolutely. The, the way we look at this is we are here as fiduciaries. Our job is to put the city before our wants, and that's what we have to do. That's what you have to do. And that's, that's just fiduciary law. And I, I agree with that, and I applaud that. I applaud that.
I just wanted to be on record. Any other discussion or questions for our EDC chair?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
I, I would like to make one comment. I think that what we're really trying to do here, or should be doing, is, yes, it's best for the city, but we also need to have in place the, the extent that we can, protection for the EDC board itself in terms of how they make decisions, and that they can make the best decisions for the city. And I think this is what, maybe there's interest in discussion here that they were varying from, is that if we have something in place that, that the EDC board can go by and say, we've looked at this, yes, there's certain parameters here, but these are cer- certain ones that are, that we're going to have to look at very carefully. You need to know about it coming in. I think this, this gives a great deal of protection for the board itself, so that in the future, it, it minimizes the, the problem of possibly approving a project that might not have been approved otherwise. So I think it's, it's good that we have safeguards there in place for the board, and that, and those have to be, those I think need to be articulated.
But I think we're being redundant in, in saying that because we have the umbrella, and within that umbrella, all of those things that you just stated can be taken care of through the EDC with their recommendations and then brought before us. And if there's a, a situation there, Councilman Foster, that you're not comfortable with, then by all means, we chose that board. You can choose to, to, to make a correction on that. Again, I just, I, I think we need to be a lot more inviting to a lot more businesses in a very, very competitive climate right now and tough economic times, and I think putting constraints like that is just not prudent.
Well, I, I think that what we're doing here is not putting any constraints on there, but to make sure that when they, when it does come to us to the extent possible, we have the best information that we can have on various aspects of the project. But I, I don't think it's, personally, I don't think it's an overlap, but some statement needs to be made about what, what the EDC is going to expect in general for a project in terms of what we would expect. Just to go in and say, how the board reacts to whatever a developer or anyone comes in with, I think would be a mistake, but that, and put really the board itself and their decision-making at risk. Thank you.
But Ken, the thing that's, that's so exciting about this is the fact that it gives us a, a framework within to create a living document, like the Constitution of the United States of America. That's a living document. It's not static. It, it's something that can grow or contract as it needs to. And, and that's what's the most exciting about this particular program, is it gives us that latitude to, to create, for lack of a better word, a, a living document, a living, breathing document for which we can grow this city and bring in people. And that's, that's my, my only point. That, that's, that was what the excitement was for me.
I think one thing that you want to take into consideration is when you start putting constraints, then you should do, you could potentially shut out a business, right?
Yes.
If it is a life insurance, well, not everybody, that's going to be applicable, right? And, and if you put, you know, some type of collateral, that won't be applicable, applicable for every single person. All this policy does is allow the EDC, at the direction of council, again, council sets the direction for the board. So if, if you want standing rules in place for loans and grants, and they cannot do, they have to do two-plus, I, I will tell you that you're handcuffing yourself as the expert that does this, but you could do that in a standing rules. But these are the policies under which each of those, and, and they take, they take their direction from council. So council should make sure that the EDC board knows what direction they want, if it's collateral, if it's, whatever that case is. And I will tell you all, I've worked with both you all and the EDC board since last October, almost a full month, almost a full year, and I truly believe that your current appointees on your EDC board want exactly what council wants. They don't want to repeat the situation we're in now. There's no desire to have unsecured loans and, you know, no more information than, hey, give us $300,000. And, and that's something that that board is also working on, is getting all of those performance agreements up to date and making sure that we have checked the metrics that were supposed to be done over the last 10 years. So I would, I would argue that, that is definitely not, they're not trying to skin. They're not trying to say, hey, we're not going to do this, but these policies just give that umbrella for them to operate under.
Again, that's the situation we're in now, is that cookie cutter that it doesn't fit in. I'm trying to get away from that, so trying to put it back in there, then what's the point? We're supposed to give the EDC the freedom and the creativity to do what they can, with, you know, within reason, and I think I trust the board that we have, and then again, it comes back to us, and I trust this board as well.
I didn't realize it was in a cookie cutter situation, and I'm, I'm still, you know, I just want some type of security for our money that we're giving away to people, and I know people have hard times and things like that, but we've lost them so many projects because there's nothing standard that says we need this kind of collateral, or what can we get from this and that, and to leave it up to, the board changes all the time, the council changes all the time, and I just think what you were saying, talking about standing rules is what we really need.
But the point of order is that's, I mean, we're, we're just going, we're beating this horse to death, and we're, we're about to be done with this discussion. I will finish this with it, again, you can't have anything static. You can't have a set, this is why we're doing this, so we can appeal to more quality businesses here in Gunbarrow to build up, okay, our, our sales tax revenue. When we beat this thing to death and we went through budget, okay, so now, what, instead of trying to really add to this and really give our chances of, of increasing our chances, all these same people that wanted to holler about the budget, we're not, we don't have enough money, we don't have this, we're going to cut staff, we're going to do all these things. Well, now all of a sudden, you want to cut the amount of businesses that are going to come here, and I'm just, I'm not going to sit here anymore and listen to any of this. I'm now going to call for a motion on 10B to consider and take action to adopt Resolution Number R-2024-009, approving the Gunbarrow City EDC Large Business Incentive Policy. Do I have a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution Number R-2024-009, approving the Gunbarrow City EDC Large Business Incentive Policy.
Jacob's second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll ask for a vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evans, no.
Jacob's yes.
Person, no.
He's muted. You mute yourself, Ken. You're muted.
Foster, no.
And I'm just going to point out what a disgrace I think it is that in, in one agenda item, you make comments about the, the drainage issues preventing businesses from coming to our community, and now, when we are discussing how much easier we can make it on businesses to come to our community, you, you contradict yourselves with every other agenda item, and it is so frustrating.
I will also ask the next time that we do one of these, if, if Councilman Foster could please not eat during the meeting, that would also help me be a little bit more professional. Now we'll move to 10C, consider and take action to adopt Resolution Number R-2024-010, approving the Gunbarrow City EDC Small Business Incentive Policy. I think we've beat this thing to death, so we're either going to ask for a motion.
I have a question. So since this is a grant program, so this is a give back of money once they have spent money, so there's not a need for collateral in this point because it is given money.
It's, it's a reimbursement. So they apply for, this is what April meant, but gee, this, they, they apply for a reimbursement grant up to a certain amount. They must provide receipts, and it outlines the guidelines of how many bids they have to have, and then using Gunbarrow City preferred vendors, and then we reimburse, very similar to trout. Some of you may remember the trouts and what's required in order to do that. But this is, the small is specific to a reimbursement grant incentive for the four areas talked about earlier.
All right, so I just didn't know if there was any issues that y'all have with this one? Okay, so I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number R-2024-010, approving the Gunbarrow City EDC Small Business Incentive Policy.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Jacob's seconds.
Vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evans, yes.
Jacob's yes.
Person, yes.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes. I move that this meeting is now adjourned.
Do you want this?
You can have it if you want it. Janet's got one. Yeah, let me have it.
You don't need to have one, do you?